Good evening, Vicksburg, and welcome to tonight's Village Council Regular Session, Monday, July 18, 2022. I'll call this meeting to order and ask all of us to say pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll just take a moment of silence, and I ask all that are people that are listening tonight, that our village is going through some traumatic times with some personal issues. And I just ask everyone not to condone others for an individual's actions. So please just give it some time to see what happens, and we'll take just a couple of minutes and we'll move on. Mr. Weins, would you take a roll call, please?
Trustee Olson.
Here.
Trustee Wagner.
Here.
Trustee Reister.
Here.
Trustee Holmes.
Here.
President Pro Tem Keller.
Here.
President Frisbee.
Here. Thank you very much. We have Julie Merrill's absent tonight. We have an agenda in front of us. There is one addition we want to make, 11E. I'll ask Alex Lee to speak at that time. That was the only other change. Did any of the council members have anything they wanted to add to this agenda? If not, I'll ask for your approval to move forward.
Trustee Holmes, I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Trustee Wagner, I support.
Motion made by Trustee Holmes. Wagner seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. We have an agenda in front of us tonight. We have no scheduled appearances tonight other than what's on the agenda. No public officials in the audience. Is there anyone, Jim, that you know of that is online? Seeing none, this is a time for citizens' comments on the agenda only. There'll be time to speak to others later on, but if there's something on the agenda a citizen would like to address, now's the time to do that. Seeing none, we'll move on. Now, we have agenda consent agenda. Contains June 27th regular session meeting minutes, warrant reports for $433,766.76. We have event requests. Amanda Riffenberg graduation for August 6th at the Historic Village Pavilion, Hemming-Vlistra wedding in the Historic Village Pavilion on September 10, and the Smith-Miller wedding October 22 at the Historic Village gazebo. We have no other correspondence. So was there any additions or checks or corrections on the minutes? Any hearing done? Entertained a motion to approve?
Move as submitted.
Reister, second.
Trustee Keller motion, and Trustee Reister in support. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill. Trustee Reister.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
President Pro Tem Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. Thank you very much. And Jim, I'll let you introduce the next item, ten on the agenda.
Yes, I have a privilege, and a person that you're all familiar with. In Kyle Mucha. Kyle has experience in municipal work for a number of years with the city of Portage, and recently made a career move to the private sector with McKenna and Associates. And we've been working, knowing that we engaged with McKenna to lead us through our revision of our master plan and a complete update what the appropriate relationship would be. And to McKenna's credit, they initiated those conversations, and which led to Kyle did submit his resignation from the Planning Commission of Vicksburg. Him and his family and three children are twins will all be a member of our community, and it's a great relationship in that we have a community member who will lead this project. So we did have one of Kyle's partners, Jane Dixon, but now that Kyle is no longer with the Planning Commission, both sides, the Village of Vicksburg, myself, and Paul, who leads the team for McKenna here in Kalamazoo, think it's an outstanding opportunity to have Kyle be the project manager. I'll let him explain. I believe he's got a couple of degrees right in this area, a little bit of his background and experience. And then there'll be a discussion with the council of the timeline and everything. So Kyle Mucha. Yep.
Well, after evening, trustees, I gotta say it is very uniquely being at this side of the diocese after three years of serving on that side. So thank you for that. Jim, thank you too for the welcome and the introduction on that. So as Jim said, I have recently, about a year ago, left the public sector and moved into the private sector. I am a senior planner now with McKenna. Used to be McKenna Associates. I'm also certified through the American Planning Association as an American Institute of Certified Planners. So that came about last year as well. So not only do you get a plethora of knowledge with McKenna, but also, like Jim said, having grown up here and seen some familiar faces from years ago when I first applied for the Planning Commission, it's a benefit too. A bit more, we've been in the area since 2015 as village residents, and then family grew up in Portage as well. So it is a familiar area for us. Our team is very excited and ecstatic that I'm able to lead this charge with you in a partnership as well. So as Jim mentioned, we are here to talk about the master plan for you guys. So under the Michigan Enabling and Planning Act, which gives authority to the Planning Commission, you have the ability to plan. Under the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, you have the ability to enforce zoning regulations in your community. So as we dive through our process here, these two will kind of come up throughout the next six to eight months. However, this is more the backbone of how we get to where we are and what the state authorizes us to do. So we can talk about those later, but it's even, I have to go back through them at times. It kind of is tedious reading as well, but it's not as germane to this. So why plan? Actually, I think that's a photo I took, which is really nice. Look at that. So being here. The master plan drives your future decisions, right? It is a policy goal. It is a policy document. It tells you where you want to go, how you're going to get there, and where you came from. So our vision is to not only be a five-year plan, but also be a 20-year plan for you as well. McKenna did do the 2015 update, so we do have some information we can pull from that as well, having been around the area before. However, as Jim indicated in his State of the Village address, you know, we're at the, what is it, crossroads of Historic Boulevard and Progress Opportunity?
Potential Avenue.
Potential Avenue. There we go. Not only are you a village with a vision too, so we want to include that as well. And as we move through our master plan process, that is our underlying goal. It's a village with a vision. And that's what we want your partnership with, and how do we get there, and then we'll make that happen through our master plan as well. So critical plan elements, we have our civic involvement, community outreach, and we'll touch a little bit more on that. I'm sure that'll be a high topic. We can discuss a little bit tonight. I'll try to keep it brief. Other areas. Data analysis, that's where we go through our demographics. 2020 census is out. And of course, as we start to get to understanding where that data is, the Census Bureau changes their website. So as I start to get into finding where all that stuff is, they change the entire website, and now you gotta go back and start from scratch. So, you know, you start to learn one program and they change it on you. Existing conditions, that'll be another fun aspect for us to look at as well as we update our master plan. That's where things stand currently. It's not our zoning plan, but it is where are things at? Where are the residential neighborhoods? Where's the commercial? Where's our park amenities, our civic engagement, and so forth? Future land use, that's a lot of the fun topic too. That's where your master plan, that's where it's going to show you, what do you want to see? How are we going to get there and what do you want to look at? Planning Imperatives and Action Plan, we'll touch a little bit later, but future land use is very important, and we'll spend a lot of our chunk of time too in our scope, working on that as well, because it's how you want to get there. Public involvement, community outreach. We propose doing an online engagement survey. We understand that with the demographics of Vicksburg, we have such a wide age range. We have young professionals starting off who just moved to the area, and we have residents who have been here for 20, 30, 40 years. I think, I see Bill in the audience too. I think he's been here for third, sometime, isn't it? So we have residents who have been here and know, and seen the community change throughout their tenure here. We propose three community workshops. Our initial scope indicated we'd like to do something with the downtown business corridor area as well, tie in a lot of the Chamber of Commerce, the DDA as well, industrial park, and any other key stakeholders. And we're still, some of this, we will flesh out with village staff as well. Our second community workshop, we would like to try to target more of the southern half of the village, more around the school area, the downtown, more of the historic homes. And then the third, because it is such a unique dynamic, is the 22nd Street corridor, and then off of UV Avenue as well. So those are kind of our three geographical ranges. They're not set, but as we envisioned our engagement, that's kind of unfortunately how the demographics, our dynamics have already lined up for the village, so we want to kind of keep with that. We are open, obviously, to anything the council views or even staff, but that's kind of how we envisioned that initially. And then we'll do an outreach analysis and provide that response back to you as well. It's about passion, like we said. I wouldn't be standing here if I didn't believe in this project for you guys. I wouldn't be standing here asking Jim to keep inviting me back for things either if I didn't believe in the process or in Vicksburg, so. Like we talked about briefly, data analysis, talks about our demographics. We'll look at the regional context. We'll look at our natural features. What does the village have to offer? Existing land uses come in there. Population and housing. We do understand too, a housing analysis will be conducted with our master plan, seeing what's missing. We'll also work with village staff a little bit more on that scope itself to make sure that we're getting the pertinent information on that. Just to get, oh, another photo I took. See, Jane prepared this for me, so I gotta give kudos to Jane. Went out last month and walked around. I took some photos to include for this as well, to get some more updated and not just stock images. So I think I took our five-year-old Molly around with me, and she posted some photos too, and had a blast doing it, so. But we'll look at this. One of our key engagement options that we do that also ties back to outreach, we like to do is preserve, enhance, develop, and redevelop. So we'll make up, what we've done for the communities is boards, engagement boards, and we ask residents, what are the areas you want to see preserved? What are the areas you want to see enhanced, developed, and then redeveloped? We find it's a real nice engagement tool because it helps us focus in on areas. Another option we can pursue is what we like to call the kitchen table map. We'll make a big print out of a map of the village, and everyone just seems to congregate around it, and they just point out what they like. We try to keep these more on a positive note. What do you like about the village? What would you change? What do you like about your community? And not a negativity-driven session. We understand there will be some perceived negativity, but we try to keep it more in a positive light. There's no biking trail down, you know, 22nd Street, or whatever it happens to be. We try to turn that into, okay, how do we get there instead then? Future land use, again, another key component of ours. This will be a fun activity that we engage with the council and Planning Commission on, and we'll take this also from our public outreach. Goals and objectives that we have, future land use plan, transportation plan. That is a state requirement that we have a complete streets policy. So that could be we expand sidewalk access. We replace sidewalks. We include multimodal transportation, is what another key term that we'll bring up a lot in this as well. Non-motorized transportation is another big thing as well out there. And then a zoning plan, and that will look at what our current, it's not a zoning ordinance review, but it's more of an analysis of what our current zoning has, such as the various districts, and then what those can be streamlined into. Some communities we work with have 16 districts. A little counterintuitive for residents who don't understand what district they're in or what the nuances is. So we'll see from there. We'll make recommendations of how do we make it more user-friendly so that anyone can pick it up and not have to have a degree in reading through it. Planning imperatives, industrial, commercial, sustainability. We understand that obviously Portage has a lot of investment going on. Vicksburg has a lot of investment going on with the MCM expansion. If we can get other ones, it'd be great. So we understand there is a draw to the village as well. Housing study, another, how do we keep people here once they're here? We also understand that there is a very limited amount of buildable land left for housing. So we will look at what are areas that could be improved, and how do we improve those that regard? And then existing utilities, that was also something that was asked for in the RFP. So we'd like to work with the village engineer and take an analysis of where existing utilities are, and then where the potential for expansion is. That'll also help drive our future land use map to know what infrastructure is already there. Because if you might have a nice farm field you want to build on, but if it doesn't have the infrastructure there, it's probably not going to happen. And then it just sits there, and it doesn't live up to its full potential on that. And then the action plan is our roadmap of how do we get there. When we put these into tangible items that can be achieved within one to five years, even longer as well. And then to the right, there is an example of how we will set these up with the village, and it indicates whose priority it is. Is it a planning commission? Is it a parks board? Is it village staff? Is it another entity entirely? But it gives you key metrics that we can go off of, and how do we get there as well, and who takes that charge? So that way, instead of having five great broad ideas, we can actually dive into how do we achieve those? So it all kind of comes together at that point, too. Project schedule, this is something we'll ask for your feedback on. However, this is kind of what our initial thought was. We kick off here in July. We start our community outreach. Initially, our goal was thinking August, September. There just so happens to be a pretty, you know, good festival that comes up in September every year. That might be pretty key for some engagement. October might have other items as well. So that will be a drive by village staff and village council of how fast they'd like to see the engagement. We can push it out further if the village council feels like it. However, our initial goal is to hopefully have the master plan wrapped up for adoption by March or April of 2023, depending on where we put our engagement activities on. So that leaves us further into there. I think Jim is at the last one. One more. So that's where, that's a very brief, under 10-minute overview of what your master plan and a kickoff's going to look like. So I welcome questions, and I ask the audience to entertain me for a few minutes while I dialogue with the village council on this.
A couple of things to the council, councils aware is the community events we're talking about are the community night at the football game that brings out quite a bit. Waiting to communicate with the athletic director on that, as well as the Harvest Festival in the Historic Village, among others. I would add that probably going to see in-person engagement utilizing Creekside for like CB McDonald Way, the condo association, and what I would describe as a south corridor. One thing, because I anticipate some questions, when we talk about existing utilities and future growth, to make clear, we're talking about within the current boundaries of the village of Vicksburg. We know we've engaged in an area of industrial property that we're going to close on. We have a purchase agreement on, but it doesn't have utilities. It's within the village boundaries. So that's specific to that before people think it's anywhere growth outside the village. It is not intended at all. It's to focus within our current boundaries where we can expand that, so.
Well, I, as one, has had personal experience with McKenna. I've had Carl Callard. We were involved seven, eight years ago with your team, developing one of the earlier models. So I feel very comfortable moving ahead with your teams. Is there any clarity or questions trustees have for? Yes, sir.
Kyle, I'm just curious, community is our size. How many have master plans? How many do this?
It is a state requirement to have master plans, and in theory, they're supposed to be evaluated every five years. We're working with some communities who last adopted theirs in like 2002. And then every five years, you can pass a resolution that says, yes, it looks good, we'll just move on. But most, and I can't, I don't know everybody, but most have a master plan, if not all, under state requirements.
Okay. And it has to be renewed or reviewed, you said, every?
Every five years.
Every five years? Okay. I appreciate that because I was not aware of that. I was aware of the 2015 master plan. Prior to that, I think there was a 2013 strategic plan, it was called. I think it's also on our website. But I wasn't aware of anything prior to that that was out there then.
For the Village of Vicksburg, they had a rewrite in 2010, I believe, in that timeframe. And prior to that, it would jump to the 1990s.
Okay.
One thing, and Kyle can correct me on this, but the legislation doesn't require the in-depth detail we're looking at doing. It simply requires a document that would be titled master plan.
Just one final comment, and I've already shared this with the village manager. I think the timing of this is really good. We've gone through, really, the last 18 months, a very transformative time in our community with the economic redevelopment that we've done. And the one thing that's really interesting, and I share with people all the time, is that many of the things, most of the things that we work on for the citizens, for the community, really come from the master plan. You know, I like to think that we're all bringing these unique ideas, but for the most part, really, it's really through this very well-thought-out document that does give us a sense of direction. And so I think in realizing where we're at seven years later, the timing's great, and I think the interest and the energy in the community couldn't be better right now for us to do something like this.
Yes, sir. Kyle, when you said that you're going to be looking at specific areas of the village to canvas, I guess, lack of a better term. Being the only council member that's on the east side of the village, I would appreciate it if there be a little time spent on the east side of the village canvassing that as well. I realize we have, we're kind of spread out a little bit to some extent, but the east side, I think, would appreciate getting input on this.
I know a lot of communities we work with as well, they see how well the outreach goes. They see how much of a turnout they have, and they ask that us to do more. So that is something that we can explore further with village staff on that. But because we wanted to keep it and be budget-conscious and efficient, we tried to narrow it down to where we would hope we would get, and we're not trying to exclude anyone, but a majority of the sampling, at least, is what we can. If I had five public engagement events, it'd be great, but to keep it more realistic for the village, that was our kind of the boundary lines that we kind of already, I think, mentally gravitate to, unfortunately. So we're happy to change it any way that'd be best for that. Unfortunately, just a lot of residents already kind of gravitate towards those districts. So we wanted to target it and make it more user-friendly when we have the engagement events, so.
We have the pavilion on the east side, so I mean, that's always available, just putting it out there, so. That's a good point, Carl. We need to get everybody's. But I was personally quite impressed with the engagement, you know, when I was involved with it, how they went out and canvassed the areas and the different, I remember one large one at the Centennial. So they picked up different areas to get different parts and different input from all the, as many residents as possible. And to Trustee Holmes' first point is that a lot of this is very community-driven. It's not us seven sitting up here, this is what we're going to do. It's not us seven sitting up here, this is what we're going to do. We look and talk to all the community and engagement and see what the ultimate desire is from the community. And that's how we place our vision, so.
And if the village manager will indulge me, we'd also would like to work with him when he gives us quarterly newsletters to also help advertise our engagement events there, too. Because we know everyone gets utility bills. And that's how I initially got interested in the planning commission. I saw Jim's comment on there from, you know, serving the planning commission. So they reach people. So we'd like to probably, if he'd entertain us as we move forward, looking at communications in there as well to get it out. You know, unfortunately, trustee Keller, we won't hit everyone. We will do what we can, the best we can with that, and I'm all happy to do that. So we'll engage with, hopefully, online as well, like I said. And we'll see what we can kind of pull that way. And then also, when we strategically place our engagement open houses as well, so.
Part of, part of the engagement process will be with all the governmental boards. So individual contact with council members, planning commission, DDA board members, as well as parks and recreation. As well as, once we get into a couple of these, where staff, Alex and I both have experience in community facilitation on some of the, these more targeted areas at the request of the council, we certainly, from a staff perspective, can, can do additional in-person or door-to-door canvassing and collect that data, and then provide it under, under what McKenna's expectations are. So that was our plan within the RFP. There will be an additional, don't hold me to the number, I think we're going to identify twenty additional stakeholders. Don't, I'll report back to the council the specific number of that. But, but there'll be additional external stakeholders contacted, reference the, reference this project as well.
And Kyle, I appreciate you, your candor on that. I just, I'd be remiss if I didn't at least, you know, mention, because the consensus of opinion from a lot of the people on the east side is that there, there are times they feel ignored by the rest of the village. So I just, you know, making sure that they at least are talked to a little bit, so.
Of course. And even if we were to host an open house, let's say, near Centennial in the Prairies and Trillium up there, it would not preclude anyone else in the village coming to that. We were trying to, our goal is to hit the concentrations to get a higher turnout, so we have a better idea, not to exclude anyone. But we've also had public engagement events where we've had ten people show up as well. So we want to be strategic on that, so we can definitely have the most efficiency on it. Which is why we thought Harvest Fest might be great, because we'll get residents out there. A homecoming might be another option we can explore, and we'll work with village staff and council directly, too.
Any other questions, or Mr. Mucha?
I just, I have a question. Would there be some kind of really small survey or something, like, what do you, you know, where they could handwrite, and what they feel is the most pressing issue, if they can't make these meetings?
So our online engagement is going to be structured to probably do what we call a, it's a social pinpoint. So we'll try to design a map as well, and we'll have the same kind of key aspects of, where would you like to see improvement made? Where do you like to see it reserved, preserved? And then with our survey, we'll also work with village staff on what questions need to be asked. We'll ask the typical, you know, what's your age demographic? Where do you live? We'll probably do potentially regions of that. So to Mr. Keller's point, we'll have a section of our village map that shows, oh, I'm on, you know, I'm in section A of the, of this map as well. And then the survey will focus more too on what do you like, what don't you like? What do you want to see improved? And we'll work with council and village staff on really getting that structured. So that won't be sent out until we have a blessing from, whether it be the planning commission, council, or even village staff, to what to ask, so we make sure that we're asking the right questions on that.
Anything else? Kyle? Mr. Mucha, thank you very much for your time.
Of course.
Look forward to working with you. So we have some action items in front of us tonight. The first one in front of us is the Village of Vicksburg Village Hall. Proposal for final design concept, and Mr. Kurt Penny and Mike Frederick are here tonight. I'm sorry. Mr. Penny, if you would introduce yourself.
Thank you. Kurt Penny with Echo Wardell Architects. We're in downtown Kalamazoo. So tonight, I'm going to present where we were about a month and a half ago, and then talk about the exterior design concepts and the floor plans, and where we go next. So our, our last presentation centered around where we wanted to locate the, the village hall. We, we selected the, the current location with the idea that we would build the new village hall, keep occupying the existing, and then once the new hall is built, we would tear down the old hall.
And for the council, that, Christian's going to hand you hard copies of this for the three that are closest to the screen, so.
So at the last presentation, we, we looked at the, the size and the orientation of the building. We, we said that we were going to look at a five to six thousand square foot building. And this, this was the result of that, with the building oriented towards Richardson and Kalamazoo Avenue. So looking at that concept, we, we developed it a bit more during this next phase of design. So again, we kept the orientation towards Richardson and Kalamazoo. You can see that we did not do a driveway connection all the way through. We felt that that would create a pass-through for people in the community, and we didn't want that to be an issue moving forward. The parking would be on the back towards Kalamazoo Avenue. And you can see that we added a sidewalk that would tie to the existing sidewalk system, and also take advantage of the parking, the village parking that is across Kalamazoo also, if overflow is needed. The area in green is intended to be developed as a art garden, so pieces that could be changed out, permanent pieces, that's, that's something we'd like to explore as we move forward. Where you see D, that would be the main entrance to the hall for city staff and village hall. And the C entrance would be for the police department. You see, see the parking there next to C, that would be dedicated to the police department. Also, I'd like to point out, as, as far as the development goes, you can see where A is, that would be a nice sign off of Richardson. We talked about, does it want to have information on it that's rotated? So an electronic sign could be possible for events, to be determined as we move forward. And then also, where you see F and E, that would be a covered area for staff to enjoy outdoor meetings, also during the day, to have an outdoor lunch. And then also, our plan is to enhance the fencing and landscaping around the water tower to enhance the whole feel of the site and really match what we're, we're doing for the building.
I'm sorry, I have a problem seeing.
No problem.
So the part showing where the parking lot is? Is that where the existing building is now?
That is correct.
Okay.
So the intention would be to, where you see the diagonal hatching on the roof, that is the building, so we would build the building, the existing hall would remain. And then, once it's constructed, we would tear down the, the old building and build the parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
We just quickly threw this up here. Go ahead.
We, we can give Gail a couple of minutes.
I'm going to go get some glasses from the car.
You're okay with that, President Frisbee?
Yes, indeed.
So let's just take a, we'll keep the YouTube rolling, we'll keep this rolling.
You just keep going, I'll be right back. I just, I have a problem with that.
Yeah, well.
That's why I like to have people.
We'll go ahead and wait a couple of minutes.
Yeah, no problem. No problem.
Will there be a fence around the water tower, or will it be part of the?
So our intention is to put a fence directly around the water tower. We'll kind, we'll minimize it, but as I stated, we would want that to be more decorative and also enhance it with landscaping. But from kind of protecting that area still, and making sure there's no mischief, we think that there needs to be fencing.
Yeah, it's required, the, I, I, we, some type of fencing. Improved fencing around that public utilities has to be there, so.
Thank you, trustee Keller. I, it's just, it's noticeable close to the building, that's the only reason I ask.
All right. We wanted to point out that we did study another orientation. We, we, in our, our little committee that we were looking at and critiquing the plan, we didn't feel like this was the best orientation to really react to your two main streets there, Kalamazoo or Richardson, and, and maximize the, the potential for the art garden and also the parking and circulation on the site. All right. So now, I'm going to show you three different concepts that we did for the exterior. So as we develop these, we wanted to keep in mind the flavor of the village, that the context, and where you're heading in the future. So we've developed three different, pretty unique concepts here. So this is the first one where we, we wanted to look at the context of, of that site and being next to the neighborhood in between the, the downtown. So we picked up on some elements as far as the craftsman style and kind of the farmhouse style that you see in the neighborhoods, and tried to relate that to, to the, to the neighborhood. So it's, it's pretty simple with its forms, as far as the roof goes, with a little bit of detail at the entrance, again, that craftsman style. And then bringing in a nice brick, sorry, stone banding on the, the bottom. And then on the majority of the building would be a composite siding that would be, you know, maintenance-free, that we, you know, would, you know, serve the building very well through its life. Again, we tried to be conscious of light into the building. So as we move around, the, the chambers has a lot of light into it. The offices have a lot of light. So it's a pleasant work experience for, for the staff. And also is a, has a nice presentation for, for the village. Again, this is a view from Kalamazoo. And this would be the view from the road. So again, you, you see the signage out there, again, that can be developed. We thought that it, the signs should be designed to match the building, to have that context. But from this view, you can see that we've, we've, again, incorporated some of that, that craftsman style and bringing a, a lot of natural light into the, the, the chamber halls. Also, again, that nice covered area that, you know, outdoor meetings, small little gatherings, or, or lunch for the staff could be in that area.
I think your proposal, though, no, the large glass area is, is the chamber.
And you can see where we've, we've attempted in this rendering, as we move through the process, we'll look at the type of fencing, but again, some type of decorative fencing around the water tower. So again, these are just some views around the building of that, that first concept. As you move around the building, these views don't have the, the landscape or the art garden in it, but just purely showing the building. So we'll move on to concept two. So we wanted to look at a different direction on concept two. So we've heard a lot, lot about, you know, the, the efforts that the village have made in the last eighteen months, the transformation, looking to the future. So we wanted to design something more modern, to really show that, that piece of how, how you are moving forward. We want to respect what's in the, the village, but we also want to see that vibrancy of, of moving forward. So we, we looked at a, a very modern design. Again, the roof structure is very simple, but starting to look at a different type of entrance that, that conveys that modern attitude in the village and, and really shows it off. We picked darker gray colors, again, more of the, the modern edge, you know, that, that you see a lot in modern, modern architecture these days. Again, we tried to, we want to select materials like metals and composites and, and things of that nature that really bring out that, that modern style. So again, this would be the, the view from Richardson. Again, signage that would relate to the building. You're seeing very low overhangs, metal roofs here. Again, a lot of glass into the, the chamber hall there. So again, it's a, it's a modern architecture, so it's a departure from the first concept. Again, some views as you go around the building to portray that modern architecture. And then, we looked at a third concept, which I really like where this one's going, because I think it is a nice blend of both. It gives you an architecture that is very contextual, not only to the downtown, to the neighborhood, but also expresses that, that modern edge we were looking at. I do want to point out, as we move along in the design, we have to be careful of kind of the, the materials, the, the metal roof versus a shingle. We have a budget here, and as we move through it, we'll, we'll look at what's appropriate to, to put on the building. But you can see in this design, we've used the grays, the terracatas. I feel like the terracata, you know, relates to the downtown, but the grays give you a, a nice mo- modern edge, along with the, the, the white banding. We'd really like to get that metal roof, because we think it's, you know, expresses a little bit more modern. But again, very conscious of the budget. So I really like where this one is going, as far as a nice blend of both. And again, as we look through the views, it has that same element. We're really not altering the, the plan, because we've really vetted out that plan, and we feel like we have a, a good concept there. But it's really, you know, where do we want to go as a village? I mean, do we want to be progressive and, and show that we're, we're looking to the future? Or do we want to relate more, I guess, to the past, or be a little bit more contextual to the neighborhood? Again, I really like this one as far as the materially, materials, as far as stone and metal and composite siding. I really think it, it makes a nice statement to where you folks are, what you have done in the last eighteen months, and really where you're, you're heading. It's pretty exciting what you guys are doing here. And then, just wanted to talk quickly about the plans. We've, we've vetted these plans out for a couple of months now. And on the right, in the, the light green area, is really where the, the city staff is going to be. So there's, there's a, a nice reception desk, and we've talked about the security measures we might want to put in place there, based on today's climate. A nice, nice lobby, so that there- A nice, nice lobby so that there, you know, if guests are coming in and waiting, there's a, a nice presentation. And also before meetings or after meetings, a, a place that, you know, people can chat and maybe sit down and, and talk about a few issues. But as we move into the, the, the staff area, we've developed a, a few private offices and then cubicle area for, for the remainder of the staff. In this concept, we have a small conference room that's off the lobby that has direct access or, and also has direct access to the staff. So again, can be utilized by the.
Where is that place?
Right here, this gray.
So on the bottom is a, a, a work area that can be utilized by the, the police staff and also the, the city, not city, village staff. And then also a large conference room slash lounge. And you can see that there's a, a door to the, the village hall area and then also directly off the chamber area. So if there needed to be a quick meeting where you needed to go into private discussion, you could go into a conference room. Also, if you're holding different events where you needed a breakout session, you could use both spaces. The, the chamber, we're, we're showing about the capacity to have twenty-five to thirty people. Again, we're not building this for Easter Sunday. We wanted to be very realistic and not overbuild. Again, if there's a big issue, the meeting would be moved to a bigger, bigger venue. But there's a lot of natural light, a lot, lot of exposure there. We do have a large AV room and then also some storage off the, the main hall there for, you know, if you wanted to set it up for different events, you might have some round tables that you wanna bring in or, you know, long tables and just, you can set up the room a little bit differently. And then a, a home for all the, the AV equipment so that it can be set up very nicely. And then the blue area is the police department. So again, they would have their own entrance but also be tied to the main lobby. Down on the, the far right of the, the blue area is the, the squad room. So nice furniture layout with natural light, but an area that they, they can work in, in private and set up monitors and workstations. And then you can see that the entrance again is private with a door that goes into the, kind of the meeting room or interview room. So that area can be locked down so that when somebody comes in, they get into that vestibule, but they can't go any further. Also, nice large storage room for evidence and ammunition. And then the, the police chief office is a, a nice rectangle-sized area that, that meetings can be held in there in private and also, again, a nice workspace. And then next to that is, is a locker room. So a toilet, a, a, a changing area. We did make it multi-gender and that's why we have two, a, a private toilet and a private changing. And then the lockers will be set up for obviously uniforms and also, you know, ammunition and, and guns and places to lock up those types of things. We did, in this concept, you see the stairs. So under the blue area in this concept, we did develop a basement area for storage and records and, and things of that nature, mechanicals, so that we could utilize that space. This concept is around fifty-seven fifty, and I think the basement was around twenty-two hundred or so. Yeah, twenty-one fifty. So this really, this plan really, in my mind, fits the, the budget pretty, pretty well. But we did, we have looked at two to four different concepts before we got to this point. And as we flip through the slides here to the next concept, it's not a lot of difference from what we were looking at before. It's just some shuffling of where the, the squad room and the entrance is on the police department. A little bit different orientation for the chamber. And then making the, the workroom and conference room, lounge, all one big space was a consideration. Again, not, not a lot different, doesn't really impact the square footage that much. It's just a different way to look at different orientations. But on this one, we did have the basement under kind of the right side of the building. And because of cost, we decided in that first concept to, to shift it to the left, left side of the building. If you flip to the next slide, you can see the, the, the square footage. You're going from twenty-one fifty to thirty-seven fifty, and we, we felt we were overbuilding here. So, but that basement would be built a, a pre-cast plank, so it would be nice and solid. You know, there wouldn't, we wouldn't have issues with creaking on the floors above and, and things of that nature. So built very well. So that, that really concludes my presentation. We, I just put a quick timeline as far as what we've been looking at all along. We're, we're looking to start design here in the, in the coming months and have a package ready for Frederick to start bidding at the end of the year, going into next year with the, the start of construction in, in spring if everything aligns, you know, the way we've been looking at. Throw it over the mic for some additional comments.
Yeah, and I think one thing, just so the council's aware, and Mike will, will explain the need, what we're asking for tonight, but there, this would get us to where we can go out to bid and actually get bids for a village hall, see the actual price in front of us. And the council would be, that would take council action and support to move forward. But I think Mike will speak to that.
So why don't we back up to the floor plan, the first floor, floor plan, concept day? One of the things, one of our goals is to always try to build a building, especially when it's municipality, that is secure and safe. And if you look at your vestibule, the area in brown, all the openings around it are key card. So if, if public comes into the building, they can't get anywhere else but into the lobby. And then, you know, they're either escorted by one of the staff or however you folks choose to do that. So that was important to us. The other thing that kind of dictates the design of the building, which is very linear, we know, we realize that, but that's intentional because we're sharing space between two different organizations, police department and municipality. And we're trying to focus there again, that secure corridor into your chambers, through the lobby and only through the lobby. So that's kind of what set the table of how we got the shape of the building. You know, as you folks know, there's, there's, you know, ten million different types of shapes and designs in two stories and all kinds of different things we can introduce into here. Does it make your building any safer? Not necessarily. So, you know, we try to design very conscious to safe and secure budget, but yet something we're all proud of that presents well to the public. I also like the vestibule because it's a place where you can display art. As you know, the village itself is, is worked very hard with a lot of different stakeholders in the community to bring more arts back into the, into our village. And with that outdoor garden and the volume of space you'll have in the lobby, it's gonna be very tasteful and I think you're gonna have a chance to, you know, partner with maybe the school or, or prairie-run artistry or groups like that that could, could work with us. So I'm, I'm pretty darn excited about that. So there again, that's how we got to the shape, that's how we looked at, at traffic flow. And then, of course, we have a very, very, very stern budget clock that's watching over our shoulder. And we hear him loud and clear. The process, let's talk about the process. So if we go to the timeline, Jim, if we could, what's not in there is we work very closely with the village and the designer with budgeting. And so hopefully, tonight, we'll get some direction to move forward with the start of the design. And then as they roll out concepts, then we start a deeper dive in the budgeting process. We've already put together one budget. It's a global budget, so they typically start out here and we try to work them to align with the goals. And the way to do that is we need design data and then we partner with various stakeholders to develop your budgets. So you'll probably see at least two, if not three, budgets presented to you folks. So you'll have a, a conversation all the way through this. And then once we are approved to go based on the budget, we put this out to bid. And our expectations are you'll get three bids in every category. And we present that very transparently to you folks. We do post-bid interviews, we want representatives there. It can be Jim, it can be Alex, it could be one of you folks. Go through the post-bid interview and we make a recommendation. And there again, you folks have total control over the whole process all the way through. So that's, that's, takes some time and that's why we, we are always trying to give you dates. And there's a reason for that. And then you'll see a pause between January and April. That's what we envision for material procurement. We hope it doesn't get worse, but, you know, right now, that's, that's the way we look at it. So, so open for questions.
I would, one, one thing on that timeline is when we have January of twenty-three, where you, we would look at the third Monday of January, possibly the first Monday of February. We traditionally present our audit results in a five, pretty comprehensive financial report the third Monday of January, which will reflect where we were at June thirtieth. We're pretty confident as a financial team, we know where that's gonna be, but we always like independent people to put their stamp on it. So I would see no later than the first Monday of February presenting the bids for this project on, on, on the build of it.
And I will say that when it goes out to bid, that's public bidding. So if you're, if you have the, as a trade contractor, if you have the wherewithal and meet all the requirements, it's, it's open bidding, so.
President Frisbee?
Yes, sir. Mr. Fredericks, just out of curiosity, we may not, may not know this, but for several years now, I believe five years now, we've, we've allocated funds so that this building actually will not require a bond, that we are looking to pay cash. Imagine that, a government that's actually fiscally responsible about what we're trying to do here. I say that with a smile on my face. One of the things, though, that we know is that the, this is coming in a little bit higher than what those funds are that we set aside. And I'm just curious from your perspective, we all know supply chain issues, boats in China are not arriving on the docks, you know, all those things. You've been in this industry for a while, give us your perspective where you see this add in six, eight, ten months. Are, are we gonna see a settling of this? Are we gonna see an increase in supply chains? Give us your best estimate on what you, we think's coming, Mike.
Yeah, great question, great question, and I wish I had that crystal ball. We know that lumber's a commodity, lumber is currently down from its all-time high, but mechanical equipment and electrical is still up. One of the things we're struggling with, an announcement last week, is your mechanical manufacturers are now going through a shutdown to retool for the 2023 energy code. So that couldn't have happened at a more unfortunate time. You know, in our view, we wish that maybe they could have delayed that requirement and given them some sense of a waiver. So we don't know how that's gonna play into mechanical equipment as a whole. I'm sure it's not good news. Fortunately with this design, we think we're not going to have a lot of large equipment because we have a lot of moldy zones, so therefore maybe we might be looking at smaller pieces of equipment in multiple locations. That's what we need these folks to determine. But we also, I can tell you, we are seeing more energy in the bid market. There's electrical-wise, we're seeing a lot more electrical contractors now have ruined their schedule. We think January's gonna be a great time to, to get the numbers, to get the excitement, to have people that wanna be part of this. So that's the reason we would like to do, have the time to do two or three budgets. That's the reason we're here tonight to ask you, allow us to move forward as we have that time to do that check and prepare a plan. If, if for some reason we can't hit the numbers, then we look at alternates to break different pieces out such as maybe we don't do the art right away, maybe we don't build the basement out right away. All these things come into play with, and, and there again, you, you, council members are gonna be part of that conversation of, of how we do that. So my last budget was based on today's market, and we're pretty close, I can tell you that. So as long as things don't get worse, you know, maybe we'll, we'll hit our numbers. So I'm optimistic, you have to be, so.
If I can add to it, we're not going to present this to the council in January or February unless we have the cash to pay it. It's fairly that simple when that's.
Yeah, Jim's been very clear on what the expectations are. So there'll be no second mortgage.
Yes, Mr. Wagner.
Mr. Fredericks, just, so what we're looking for tonight, we have the total of the three concepts from Eckhart Wurdl and as well as the two additional floor plans. So are we looking to move forward with approval to get six budget concepts and then move forward from that point?
So I think our, our goal tonight is, and, and I might be speaking for Jim, but I think our goal tonight is to try to come up with a preferred floor plan and a preferred exterior and then a direction of allowing these folks to proceed into design.
Yeah, yeah, tonight, tonight would, if we focus on first the exterior plan, the interior plan, we've met probably four to six times on practicality. And I assure you, the, the first plan that we have is, is that complete medium. There's nothing special of that plan. It's, but for use, in use into the, well, in the foreseeable future works. We spoke a little bit about cutting half the basement and different layouts and not needing two kitchens and those type of things. I, I mean, it's, we're a small village, it'll be a small village staff for quite a while. So I would, I mean, it, we want that flow where it doesn't culturally set up. I, you know, you know, the, the police department, due to the requirements of some of their security, has an area onto itself, but make no mistake, those police officers on the front lines are ambassadors to this village every single day. And they understand the, the, the village mission well outside the police department, that they're communicating to our citizens as they walk a block each day and out in front of the schools. So specific to, is, is looking for council input on the exterior, what options? And, and we can go through those again. And then we'll look at the interior. And what I would propose there is to show you the final concept that the team felt was best for the interior. And then if you have questions or recommendations or suggestions on that product, we certainly have a conversation about that and proceed forward in that. And ultimately, whatever concept A, B, or C that the majority wants to move forward, the approval then in front of the council is to, to let the professionals loose to get us. And, and Kirk can probably explain that, but. And, and Kurt can probably explain that, but this is not, the, the monetary investment we're making tonight will, will not be second spent on the building we select for this property. Meaning it, it will come ready for site plan review and, and all of that. So, so it's not, we're going to invest this amount of money and, and within the budget that Mike and I, I have spoken about, I'm confident that we're gonna be within that with, with, with cash in hand.
Yeah, I think as Jim has said, that even if we don't award in January, this design is done and it's ready to go, and you would have done that regardless, knowing that your commitment was to move forward with a new building, so.
That's, that's something I wanted to make sure the trustees all understood, that this is necessary to move ahead. But if for some reason 23 sets us back, it's done. It's been spent, paid for, the design and the engineering is done. So even if we do next year, if we have to wait a year or two years, that aspect is done. So it's an investment we won't have to put out again, and it's an investment we have to make to take the next step.
You'll see that as far as our proposal to the village, it's just professional services. We're, we are, our budgeting and to get to bids, we, we felt we would just support that, that we're not looking for reimbursement from our company. So what you see in front of you should be a proposal directly from Eckert-Wardell, so. Because we're that excited about partnering with the village, so.
Thank you for that. So you all see, the trustees, you see a little, probably a little bit of aspect to all your opinions, right? We've gathered all our desires a year and a half ago, right? And they took all that and put into this model. I've spent some time with their team, a couple of other architects. Carl's been involved in it, and we really whittled it down. Of course, our, I don't wanna, I shouldn't use that term. Our, our financial manager put his say on some of the investments, what we were doing, something as, as simple, we would assume that we put in amends in, in ladies' bathroom in, in the police hall. Well, let, let's make it a unisex and reduce, you know, one whole set of facility needs, and, and make it one locker room. So that really reduced some of our perceived cost in that. So there's been a lot of vetting going on behind, behind the boards, but you know, what, all your inputs you've made, you should see reflected in these designs. One of the things that came also from it was the, the older craftsmen style and the new modern look. So our, I think Carl was like, you know, we, we don't wanna perceive ourselves to be in, you know, the 20th century, but at the same time, we don't wanna have this ultra-modern building sitting in, in the middle of what we have. So there's gotta be a blend of new and old to make it look like we're, we're moving into the next generation. And I thank you for that third drawing. That's, that's pretty cool, so.
I think if you, if, I may add that if you go down Calm's Avenue, you have a, a blend of new and old residential already. So there's, there is the ability to be flexible, a little more flexible with this design, as opposed to on Main Street, if you will. So, you know, we, we consciously looked at that, not doing a vertical face like we see downtown, because it, it really wouldn't be appropriate for the neighborhood either. So that's kinda what pushed us, and there again, into a gable shingle or metal roof system, depending on where that ends.
One thing, if I can say, Mr. Frisby, off topic, is just those watching on YouTube, and for the record, the Zoom platform went down. So I don't know if that platform is doing maintenance right now. So we've temporarily lost the Zoom connection. I'll try to reestablish it before comments at the end of the meeting, but, but it wasn't here. We have internet and that, so we'll continue to work on that.
Thanks, Jim.
YouTube is still up, and, and YouTube is now not up. I, 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 I always have YouTube on my phone, so we might not be showing it's up, but, so.
So I think it's a matter of, of how we get you comfortable looking at these three concepts. And is there a, one of the three that feels like it's the right one? Or a variation of the three that feels like it's the right one?
Yeah, and keep in mind, and keep in mind, once we get to that final concept, as we develop it further, we're going to look at samples of different colors, different stones, and, and bring that to the table. So, you know, if the, the colors are, are slightly off from your expectations, that's where, you know, there's, we're still gonna be designing. This isn't it. You know, we'll continue that progress and development in the drawings.
Well, I think I'll just go first and say that I think the third option is definitely the place where I'd like to start. I see a lot of the promise in it with the multiple composites in the architecture. You've actually brought a pretty good blend into it that I felt I agreed with, that we've got the multiple stones, the steels, the metal. And it still looks like it, you know, when we get closer to final design, could stand into what we're looking for the expectation of the neighborhood and, and to represent with that building. So, so far, I've been the most impressed with that design out of the three.
Would you mind just blowing through the, the three again, and?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll regroup at the end.
Yeah, so this is, again, concept one. This is the, the craftsman style. Again, very contextual to the neighborhood, very simple stone and composite siding with the shingle roof. Again, the crafts, craftsmen detailing, and the glazing. And then we move to concept two. So this is, I guess you could say, the ultra-modern one. So again, your eaves are very small, bigger fascias, a little bit more glass. We're, we're still bringing in a little bit of stone, not as much, but this is a, a lot of metal mixed with composite. And again, we looked at the, the darker gray tones to, again, enhance that ultra-modern architecture. And then, again, this is the one I, I felt I was really getting excited about, because it, it really blended both. So it gave you that contextual feel, not only to the neighborhood, but I think relates to downtown very well also with the, the color scheme. We, we are still bringing some of that modern architecture with, we can do a lot with, you know, whether it's metal panel or composite. I, I like the, the way the, the glazing patterns are heading. We still wanna introduce some larger fascias to give that modern feel. And then, of course, I'm still real excited about the roof. We'll have to, again, see where the, the budget falls on that, but there's, there's different options there, too. And, and as you can see on the corner, this is where we bring in some of the stone. So, you know, it could be something that relates to Vicksburg as far as the stone. It could be something that we find in a, a nice sample board that, you know, really relates to that, that modern architecture also. But I think this one really blends very nicely with the neighborhoods, the downtown, and then also makes a very strong statement about where the, where the village is heading in the future.
One of the things I think that, if you could scroll in, Jim, on the bottom right corner. It, it's very difficult at times to, to really get a grasp of all the renderings because of the shadows. But I think, Kurt, am I wrong that you have an area of glass? If you look at the front of the building there, right up in there.
Yep.
So right, currently, the lobby is intended to be vaulted. And I'm really excited about what that might look like when they start going through design. But that's just another element that I think is, is gonna be pretty nice to, to look at standing in your.
Yeah, the intention is to bring, as you walk in, a vaulted ceiling all the way through to the back of the building in the, the chamber hall there, so very, very exciting detail.
And if we could get just a little more funding, we probably could do timber build, but.
He has a bad heart, okay, so be easy.
It's gotten worse by the minute.
Sorry, boss, I had to say that, I had to say that, so.
So I think I'll keep everybody on task and try to make this quick, you know, I'll just ask for all those thoughts in favor of number one. Just raise your hand. Who prefers number one? There's one vote for one. And number two, any votes for number two, the look, the style? How about number three? Seems like Denny. Well, I, I will say that that discussion was played long and hard about the look, the craftsmen style, the older look to it, and then the new modern look, so how do you incorporate one or the other?
Can we, can we ask, and we, we, I saw this, but Julie, what are your comments?
Okay.
Positive or concerns?
The one, number two, I really, really didn't care for. It just, it just seemed real vanilla and generic to me.
Okay.
And the last one, what kind of, that line where it goes horizontal and does the arch, I know it's gonna make it the cathedral ceiling or something, but what I do like about that is the standing seam roof. And if the craftsmen had that, I thought that would look super cool and change the color a little bit, because the house to the north is a real classic brick farmhouse, and that, that really looks so cool. And I think with the craftsmen, if the color were changed slightly, it's like right now, that's kind of a vanilla, too, just being the off-grade. And it seems like it could really play up, like with the, a vertical board and batten. I don't know if I'm saying that right, instead of horizontal siding. It seems like it would have been vertical siding and fats and skinnies, I don't know what's calling, on the craftsmen, because it seems like that could be whipped up a little bit and kind of be sort of modern, too. So, I don't know. I think I'd like.
To me, they, they kinda took that, that theme with the third one. They took the craftsman theme and kinda put on it, what could we do to make it look a little bit more modern and progressive, if you wanna use that term, to kinda, yes.
I was just gonna add, my, my concern with craftsmen, I think it looks great if I was gonna live in it. It's a home.
For a house.
And to be very candid with you, if you go in residential areas, it's the flavor of the day. Well, if you go in my parents' neighborhoods, limestone of the day was flavor of the day. Got a feeling in 30 years, that design is gonna be a little outdated, and people are gonna come into our, to our village hall and go, well, that was a nice village hall in the 20s. So anyways, that's just my, my comment about.
From, from number.
Number one. I think it looks great. It'd be great to live in. That's my only comment about.
It was interesting, because we were really challenged with, bring us something that is more modern, because it's the first impression of a lot of people that visit the village, right? And so they, they put them to, them to paper. I leaned towards option one until I saw option three, Julie, truly.
Yeah, I.
And I saw option three, and I loved it.
I, I think one thing that, that I know that motivated the conversation in the prep meetings was even a discussion about Oswalt Park. And the look of Oswalt Park that some have commented on are, is a modern-type look, but how well that look was, has been received, at least from input to staff. And that's when we, we charged this team with, hey, let's, before we get to the council, let's get it back to the, the drawing boards and, and that, so.
You know, and maybe even in this concept, they can bring to you an elevation that's got board and batten, composite siding that's mixed in.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, I like the stress that this wouldn't be the end-all, be-all. It, we would focus on this and look at a couple options with the, the elevations of this one, knowing that we're, we're heading in a direction. And then also, we wanna relate the inside to the outside. So the color schemes, the, the furniture that you look at for your, your lobby, and how the light plays on that. So, you know, we're, we're really excited about this one in, in our office.
And not to get sentimental, I guess, but Jackie's in the audience. The, the stone area on the corner, I mean, if there's any, any bricks still left over from the old mill that aren't being utilized potentially, maybe they could be incorporated in the corner part of the building. As a nod, nod to the, to the past. I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, I just, just throwing it out there.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of different ideas. That's where the creative juices flow, once they start going on it, you know?
Like Mr. Penny said, they, they started getting pretty excited when they were looking at the third option, when we, we gave them the, you know, EDIG to, to look further, look harder, and, and give us something that reflects our past, but shows where we're going.
On, on the procedural end, President Frisby, if, we definitely will need a roll call vote on the expenditure of money, and we can talk about that second. But it's, it's your choice if you want to proceed forward with this team focused on option three that's in, in front of us. If you wanna do a roll call vote or voice vote, that would be your, your choice on that.
President Frisby, I make a motion that we allow Eckert-Wardell to proceed with option three of the exterior design, move forward for final design concepts.
Trustee Wagner will support.
And we'll, we'll do a, also another motion and, and vote on the funding, right? We're just, okay. So we have a motion by trustee Keller and a second by trustee Wagner. I think for that one, we can do just a, a voice, voice call, roll call, roll call. If you would, please, Mr. Wines.
Trustee Holmes?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Reister?
Yes.
Trustee Merrill?
Yes.
President Protem Keller?
Yes.
Trustee Olson?
Yes.
President Frisby?
Yes. So if you don't mind speaking to some of the funding, as, as I kind of briefed earlier, that this is, to get to our end goal of building this regardless if it's 23 or 26, we, we'll have to go through these, these motions to take the next step. So it's money that is in the bank for us, so to speak, in both ways. We have the money in the bank, and we'll have to spend it at some point, so this, this is the next step moving forward.
We'll, we'll have to spend it sometime. Yes, the motion referencing in both Kurt and Mike, and I, I wanna highlight, without taking up much time, the relationship with Mike Frederick, his team. Ryan's here tonight. And it is, it's, it's, I think, of mutual respect. Certainly, I respect the team Mike has in his office. I respect their patience. Sometimes, being a firm Irish person, and where, the length and width of this dollar bill we're spending. So I, I, that's what I, I want to emphasize from staff. I just think the relationship and getting to know Kurt, they, they actively listen to the conversation and, at sometimes suggestions, sometimes inquiries, and then other times more firmness, and, and take it completely professional. So I wanna publicly thank both of them and their teams for that. But on, they can, the investment total dollars, which we have, what is in front of you, and I'm trying to, okay, here's a document, is not to exceed $132,150. And you can see it listed out on page two at the bottom on the services from Eckert-Wardell, Hurley and Stewart, which are civil and landscape, JDH, structural, other professional services on the survey and, and GEO. on the survey and, and geo-technical, um, arriving at that dollar amount. There is an additional, they're recommending thirty-two hundred dollars reference reimbursable expenses, um, that, that is in a limit that the village manager can approve if we ever, uh, need to utilize that, so, so, um, the total amount in front of the council, and if you have questions, reference, uh, what that investment gets us in a more minute detail, but what it will bring is a complete package that we could present to a governmental entity for approval through site plan and get it to bid. So what we're looking, staff is looking for is approval for the village manager to enter a contract and have our, our construction manager Frederick's Construction, but the contract not to exceed that hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
I will say, we reviewed the pricing and the percent relative to construction cost is fair and reasonable, um, based on our experience of working with other architectural firms as well, so, um, that is part of our job, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the village, that's what you've hired us to do, is to, to make sure that, um, your money's spent wisely, and, uh, so Kurt was too much money, I'd stand up here and tell you he's too much money, uh, but it's, it is, it's a fair and reasonable charge, I can tell you that, so...
We have them both in front of us now, are there any questions for them and desires?
With the councilwood inquiry, uh, what we'll do is, um, present, uh, looking at, at the structural of this is, we'll do it within this fiscal year and just present an amendment, um, either at the August or in our first quarter amendment reviews, but this would be utilizing, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three money that we know, uh, is well within, uh, what the village will, will have available.
Thank you, if there's no further questions, we appreciate your time. We do have a request by staff to enter an agreement with Eckert Wardell, uh, on the amount of a hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and one fifty dollars, so I ask, what is the desire of this council?
Uh, trustee Wagner, I will make the motion that we approve the village manager to enter contract with Eckert Wardell, or not to exceed one hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, to get the design process rolling.
Trustee Holmes, a second.
Motion made by trustee Wagner, second by trustee Holmes, Mr. Weins, will you do a roll call, please?
Trustee Reister?
Yes.
Trustee Olson?
Yes.
Trustee Merrill? Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Holmes?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Keller?
Yes.
President Frisbee?
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Penny, Mr. Fredericks, thank you very much. Ah, it's gonna be great, I appreciate it.
I did promise Kurt, I know he's busy and, uh, might have to step out, so you're more than happy to step out if need be, I probably should've said the same thing to Kyle, being a father of three young children, we certainly...
Is he still here?
Yeah, yes, so, but, thank you.
Thank you very much, so, uh, action items, uh, action eleven B, the Sunset Lake Boardwalk and Fishing Pier repairs, I think Mike and Mr. Fredericks are gonna address this, excuse me, Jim and Mike Fredericks are gonna address this on that.
Yeah, I'll let, uh, Mike, uh, go through and I'll call up, but you have this in front of you in your packet, um, and he can talk about, um, some of those concerns, give me a second, Mike, and I lost my other contact here.
I'll just get started a little bit, as you know, um, we have, in this village, um, we're very lucky to have the parks we have, um, some of the infrastructure, uh, boardwalks and decks and things of that nature are, um, twenty years old plus, um, I was asked to visit each one of them, um, review their conditions and put together recommendations, and in some cases, what we found was, um, structures that needed some pretty quick, immediate repairs, and so I put together a list of short-term, um, repairs that, uh, I feel the village needs to do, um, in order to make sure these structures are safe, um, and we're not subject to public, uh, injury or, yeah, any of those issues. So, if you folks want me, I can start with Sunset Lake, um, we have a north and south boardwalk there, that's a pretty extensive investment from the village, um, I frankly have lived here all my life, and I don't remember the year that was built, but I'm sure it's all of twenty years old, if not older.
Yeah, I, Ron Smith, well, it was the early nineties and possibly late eighties it was put in.
Yeah, so the, the structures themselves have, have weathered pretty good, um, but now it's, it's, it's time to do something, I reviewed both of those structures, uh, poor to fair condition, and put together recommendations to get them, um, another five years down the road with some continuing maintenance, um, but you're gonna find, for example, that the fishing deck, if you will, or pier, um, is currently, um, it's, it's unsound, it's unsafe and should not be used, so, um, we put together a budget to make those corrections, um, and when we're done with them, they'll be structurally sound, um, they'll be usable, they will not be new, um, but our intentions are to clear some of the vegetation carefully, do the structural corrective measures necessary to make them safe, par wash them and seal them with two coats of sealer, replace various deck boards, um, I think a total of forty between the north and south, um, and, and try to breathe a little more life into them, knowing that, um, obviously we're going through master planning now, we don't know where that venture will take us, um, but I would presume the parks will be a topic, and, um, so you can see in some of these pictures, we've got some rails, raised nails, fasteners, you know, when they built this, they didn't use, um, a lot of the types of material that we use today, such as the brackets and the fast screws and things of that nature. We're, we're replacing some of the edge boards, uh, this is an ADA, uh, boardwalk, and that's why the edge board is there, to prevent, uh, someone from tipping off the side of it, uh, so we're gonna reattach all of them and then replace, uh, identified specific ones. So when we're done with it, there again, it'll be a very usable, very safe, it there again, will not look new, but it, it's gonna look a lot better than what it does now, so... And there's quite a bit of that there, I was quite surprised really, because I don't go over there much.
What's in front of the council is, uh, an amount not to exceed, um, the twenty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, and the short-term scope is that, you know, we know there'll be ongoing maintenance each year as we move out, but, but we're looking for, for use of these facilities within our parks for, over the next five years minimum, with a continued evaluation yearly, and, so it's focused on completing the recommendations from Frederick's Construction, uh, under step one, and Mike's laid out that, so. We broke it up from the wooden walkways, um, north and south, um, with the south one being connected to the pier, it is staff's recommendation, um, that, that, uh, the approval, um, and we'll, uh, develop it within the Parks and Rec budget and do the same thing, it'll be twenty-two, twenty-three money, um, and we'll amend it specific to this project, but we felt it was important to get it back open and usable, uh, within the park, yeah, and I think, and Mike, again, um, can correct me, but his hope, I think, is certainly, uh, in the first part of August to be completed, if not sooner.
Yeah, yeah, the, the, the material's really available, manpower's really available, um, if, if it's the council's desire, um, it, we can get right on it, take care of it, so... So that would be Sunset.
Let's take them one, one at a time, the totality is on all of these requests, we will have twenty-two, twenty-three money if every single request is approved tonight, so I think for voting purposes, so I'd like to keep the roll call vote specific to the project, and so we'd ask for, for a motion, support and a roll call vote for the village manager, uh, approval to, to expend not more than that twenty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
President Frisbee, if I could?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to share a, a thought with my fellow trustees, uh, had an opportunity to talk with Jim regarding these repairs, and as a lifelong resident, and actually someone who lived on Sunset Lake for years, um, I've seen our parks go through a transformative period of time, I think Mr. Olson can remember when we were kids, he used to have a lifeguard down there, a lot of sand, and, uh, this time of year, you couldn't find water space because there were, there was a lot of swimmers, couldn't find a swimmer in that water today if you went down and gave him a hundred dollars, and the reality is, is that recreation is a moment of time, people move on, we used to have a bowling alley, we don't have a bowling alley anymore, and so, my, the reason I share this with you is that I actually have mild reservations about approving this money, because we all know we have limited funds and we have a lot of needs, but I do believe that we've got commitments to the community that we need to make our safe, both this and the observation platform. So the idea that we do a short-term repair to this makes all the sense in the world, but, which I think is, is very fiscally responsible, but I, I also will follow up with Mr. Frederick's side, and that is the idea of this right here, and, and I think we have seven parks, if I remember that last number, it could be more than that, um, but I like the idea that we're asking the community, what are you using, what resources do you want to access, because, then let's commit our money to that, and because I, we're gonna talk about the observation deck in a minute, folks, I don't know about you, I don't know the last time I saw anybody standing on that, uh, taking a look at the beautiful Clark Park, but it's been a while, so again, I just think that it's important for me at least, when I look at this, to, to realize that this is a very measured approach, I appreciate that, um, a- and I'm willing to, to commit my vote, yes, to ensure that at least the citizens have safe, um, access to this.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Rick, I agree with you, we moved to Long Lake in sixty-six, and I took my swimming classes there at Sunset, so I do remember, you want to talk long-term, I'd like to see, uh, a better swimming area there, like what we grew up with, I think, uh, if you want to put something into the future plans of this, of this community for the next twenty years, then let's get a, a swimming area, a better one, like what we grew up with, um, and I think that beach could be used a lot more than it is, so I have to agree with that, thank you.
Well, you're, you're, you all are kind of leading me into something that's been on my mind for some time, is, is the lake. To me, it's, it's changed, right, it, it's, we have three choices basically in front of us, do we let it go back to nature, if the dam breaks, do we let it go, do we do something with what we have there in the lake, clean it up, however it be, drain it, excavate it, the reason we don't see people down there is you just don't want to go, I mean, it's mucky, there's sediment and silt, so, I, I've had this burning in the back of my head for a year, I've talked to a few close friends about it, I'm thinking here in the near future that I want to form a committee, a subcommittee, of people like-minded that have some stakeholders and not, you know, community residents, people who live on the lake, what are we gonna do with the lake, what is your desire, what do we see at long-term, so, that'll fit into the master plan, I think part of that'll come out, but I absolutely agree, uh, it was a hell of a lot cleaner when I was a young kid swimming there, right, so, we all know that, and, and the amount of flow that's coming through that waterway, and it being dammed up like it is, like every major mill in, in our area, you do Paw Paw, Maple Lake, they all filled in somewhat, so, we've got very few choices, I mean, it's to either let it go like it is, you try to make it better, um, let it go back to nature and let the dam deteriorate, so, that's something that's been, you know, in, in my mind quite repetitively, so I think from our master plan, we'll, we'll work into that, so it's a, it's a real good point, and a good segue into some of my thinking on that, that lake, so...
Yeah, I think, I think the lake is an asset to the community.
I, I do envision it as an asset, but I've also had people tell me it's, it's a, it's an anchor, you know, with maintenance and investment and weeds, and it's certainly not doing much the money we put into it, it's, it's short-term, I mean, it's just holding it off, so, um, that's something I think, you know, we all agree on, is...
We just had a discussion about this the other day, and Paw Paw Lake got brought up, and Mr. Lee used to sit on their board, and Paw Paw Lake has been drained, I don't know how many times in my lifetime, but I remember looking out into Paw Paw Lake, Maple Lake, and seeing tree stumps out there, water skiing that lake and looking down and seeing a tree stump, you want to see something scary, but, and we discussed the possibility of doing that, of drudging the lake, or even, you know, draining it and cleaning it up, so we have to obviously look at the cost, but I think it's something that we need to take a serious look at, so...
So I'm not the only one with, with all the sauce, and I, and hopefully this master plan will lead us down, down that road, so, I appreciate your comments, Rick, I mean, the point is well taken, um, it's, it's difficult to even fish off that pier, because you've got another thirty feet out in front of you of weeds, so it's, uh, I've gone down there and fished it, and then I put in my waders and gone out and passed it, so it's, but...
I just had a question, I don't know if they have the, um, the floaty things that designate the swimming area, but they're in place, okay, 'cause I guess the fishing boats come into it, and then you've got fish hooks where people might be swimming, so...
We, we put those designated areas out, I think, three years in a row, I can check to see if they're still operational, but we, we didn't have anyone swimming, um, and it was more to protect that people wouldn't cast and lose a line and there'd be hooks to worry about, uh, two years ago, we doubled the beach area and brought sand in, about thirty-five hundred dollars to entice the area, we put sidewalks up, put bathroom facilities that were protected, we restained and shingled the pavilion there, um, as well as, uh, appropriately took back some of the trees, so, each year we have tried to improve, I think it goes back to what some of the council members say, it was, uh, there were probably less options when Mr. Holmes and others swam in, in there, um, and I think that's what dictates a lot of it, uh, you know, the, um, I've asked some citizens, and they go up to Ramona Park, which is a seven-figure-plus facility, um, that's pretty close to the, the village.
More to come.
Good discussion.
Thanks, Rick. So we have a, uh, did we, we wanted to move on? Do you want to make a motion on that individually? So, staff has put that, uh, in front of us, our request, so I ask, uh, council, what is their desires?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, engaging Mike Frederick with our village manager to spend the twenty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars to improve, or just maintain, the area at Sunset Lake, the boardwalk and fishing pier.
Holmes, a second. Trustee Merrill makes a motion, and trustee Holmes, seconds, we'll do a roll call, please, Mr. Weins.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Merrill? Trustee Reister?
Yes.
Trustee Holmes?
Yes.
Trustee Olson?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Keller?
Yes.
President Frisbee?
Yes. Motion carries.
So the next topic of discussion is the Clark Park, um, observation deck and lower boardwalk, um, the observation deck, um, has got some problems, I think you've all seen it, you've all been by it, um, the piles farthest to the west have tipped out and need to... The piles farthest to the west have tipped out and need to be re-secured. We have some drainage issues. That parking lot, as it currently stands, all drains right towards that deck. And when we had our last three-inch event, it caused a lot of damage underneath the deck and some damage to the piles. And so we're at a crossroads of do we salvage what's there for a period of time until we get through a master plan to determine what our needs are and what should happen? Or short of preventing anybody from using it or tearing it down, you know, we're, we're, we're right there at that crossroads is what I'm saying. In our proposal, we, we have recommended adding a new drain structure where that round circle is. But then in talks with DPW, underneath the stairwell right there, there is an assumed existing drywall. I didn't have a lot of confidence in what I could do with it, so I didn't take that into consideration in that budget. But we would certainly look at meeting with DPW and seeing if there's cost savings to expose that and see if it can be reused. My fear is maybe once that fills up, it, it drains under the deck as well too. And that's the real problem here is we have to control the groundwater. If we look at the deck itself, if you scroll down a little bit, that is a header that is fastened to the big round piles. And the headers have shifted to the west and back when that deck was constructed, they didn't use hurricane clips. So part of our proposal is there's basically 40 locations that we would. Well, first of all, we're going to put cables to cable the piles together in an X brace fashion. We're going to try to straighten them. We're going to try to hopefully have this header picked back up when we do that work. And then we'll add hurricane clips to tighten everything up. So that's, that's the number one goal with, with the deck itself, the observation platform. When we, up on top in the platform, where all these proposals have us power washing and sealing, repairing top of the rails, they, when this was constructed, they used a lot of short 10-foot-long two-by-sixes for the flat layer of the top of the rail. We're, we're proposing to replace them all. Use a little bit longer bores and make it a little more rigid. We are re-securing, I think, eight of the mid, mid-posts in this proposal. We go down to the boardwalk. You can see here where we've had a lot of erosion underneath the deck. We're proposing some minor excavation once we get the, the piles re-supported. And placement of an erosion cloth and four-inch rock. It's going to be about 12 yards of rock that we're, and really you're going to have to haul it down there by hand. There's no real good way to get down there, so. We're also going to replace a lot of those deck boards. You can see where that rail tips out on the right side. There's, there's some stuff going on there that needs to be bolted back together. And if you continue to scroll down, there's just another shot of a joist that we intend to put hurricane clips on. That stairwell right there, on the bottom right, needs to be replaced. The stringers are rotted, the treads are rotted. And then I'd also recommend replacing the eight boards where your bench seat is as well to avoid some splinters. So, you know, there again, safe. Yeah, you see the pile in the top left, how that's tipped out? Maybe? So, and then you see my red X brace? That, that will be cable bracing. It will put three, three sets of cable bracing on that to try to, to try to hold that in place for any future movement. So visually, it's going to clean it up and make it look 10 times better. And then structurally, I'm convinced that, that we can save it. We can breathe life into it for the next five years. We, you know, there again, this is a rail repair that we'll have to do. That's down quite a ways. But we are going end to end. We're not just doing a piece of it. There's quite a, you know, 240 linear foot of boardwalk there. So it's quite a little bit of work. And will it look new when we're done? No. But it will be safe. And you can use it and it'll service you for another five or six years. I think the piles have a lot of life into them, so if this board chose in year five to rebuild the top landing, they could. But if we don't do something soon, you'll lose that option. So, so that's the reality of it.
This, uh, request would be to approve the village manager not to exceed $30,242 on the needed repairs and maintenance to the observation deck at Clark Park. And this is within what we presented budget-wise to, in June. We placed more money than this.
I'm under budget?
I'm not, I'm not, I don't know if I want to say that amount of money. No, but yes, we, we, we budgeted $40,000 for improvements to Clark Park. But that also includes the drainage improvements that, that were happened done. And comes right within budget with the two together. So this will not need an amendment in the future. It was a budgeted investment.
And, and we tried to be conservative as well too, knowing that not everything needed to be replaced. It's, it's not time yet, so.
President Frisbee, could I make a motion?
Yes, sir.
That the village manager ran into a contract with Frederick Construction Company for repairs and maintenance to Clark Park Observation Park, not to exceed the amount of $30,342.
$242.
Two, excuse me, $242. Didn't want to give you another $100 there, Mr. Frederick.
Trustee Wagner, I'll support.
So we have a motion made by trustee Holmes, a second by trustee Wagner. We'll do a roll call, please. Mr. Weins?
Trustee Reister?
Yes.
Trustee Holmes?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Keller?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Merrill?
Yes.
Trustee Olson?
Yes.
President Frisbee?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next item falls within the village manager's spending limits, but we did want to advise the council, the gazebo off of Prairie Street that Mr. Fredericks took a look at for us. To, to get that up to speed was at $3,850. We'll identify money within the existing budget and staff will be advising Mr. Frederick at the same time to move forward. But due to the amount of money, if the council wishes to, to comment on it or, or, or not have it done. But we felt the need and it was within our limit to approve, so I went and placed that in the budget. And if the others, which you have supported and we appreciate it, their crews will be right down there. Just wanted to inform the public and the council that the work on the gazebo will be done and completed as well.
What was that amount again?
$3,850.
Okay, thank you.
That's specific to this gazebo across from Clark Park there.
And if you take a look at the pictures that I provided, we have some roof shakes that are missing and we're getting water leaking into the building. We have one seven-foot section of rail that you can see is either been damaged or rotted away. And then we have one roof board. If you scroll up just a little bit, that's missing. I don't, I don't know, down right there, see that gap? Yeah, that board's just missing. So that's, that's a big toe-stuffer is what that is. The structure's in sound shape. I'm not convinced that the roof's going to last five or six more years yet. And we need to get in it, into it a little bit deeper because it's wood shake. And there again, I think that structure's got some age to it. But, but you know, the structure coming out of the water is in real sound shape. The joists are in sound shape. Most of the rails are in sound shape. So we could be looking eventually, maybe year two or year three, at some different roof structure above it. So don't be surprised if that comes back. There again, it gets completely power washed and sealed. You know, is it going to look new? Nope. But it's going to look nice and, and look better.
And they'll be safe.
Yeah, they'll be safe, absolutely.
You intend to power wash the shingle shakes?
Very carefully.
Yes.
Very carefully, yeah. Yeah, otherwise I'll be replacing your roof.
That's kind of what I'm hoping. Don't want to jinx them.
Yeah, that's, that's a measure twice, cut once conversation with our staff.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's a very reasonable price, absolutely. I thought it would be considerably more, yeah.
Yeah, well, there again, we, you know, we, we tried to, to be conservative and spend the only amount of money that's necessary to give you some time. And that's what, that's what the conversation's about really, so. Any other questions?
Mike, thank you very, very much.
Thank you for your time. Much appreciated. Thank you for that.
Jim, thank you for bringing that out to our attention. I appreciate that, sharing that, communicating with the trustees about your expenditures, our expenditures. So thanks. So we move on to, ooh, village president nominations. So we have a opening in the planning commission, uh, commission. And I make a recommendation that we appoint Mr. Zach Bishop to, to replace Mr. Mucha. I don't know if any one of you have an opportunity to meet with Zach. I think the HR team's talked with him, but this young man is just full of energy. He brought his business here and he's already grown it exponentially and he plans on keeping it here. He's talked and looking at other property right now to expand his, his business and just got a, recently grouped up with a Chamber of Commerce, reformed that group. Just, just, I think he'll be a great addition to the, to the committee. So I would like to recommend Mr. Bishop to the Planning Commission. And just would ask of your support in that.
Yeah, I'd like to offer a comment.
Yes, sir.
The interactions I've had with Zach Bishop have been, I mean, limited to, are we good? I'm good. Planning, or not Planning Commission, geez, Chamber of Commerce is where I've gotten to interact with him the most. And he's a really bright younger guy. Like you said, brought his business to the village. He's making his home here and he's interested in, in participating in the process and trying to live out the vision. So I've been really fortunate to get to spend some time and, and work with him on that. So I'd really like to see what he could do for being a part of the Planning Commission.
We'd like a, a motion of support, absolutely.
I will make that motion of support to nominate Zach Bishop to the Planning Commission DDA Board.
Reister, second.
We got a Wag, trustee Wagner made a motion of support of appointing Zach Bishop to the Planning Commission and DDA. Seconded by trustee Reister. I'll just do a, a voice call. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, look forward to it, Mr. Bishop.
President Frisbee, just so I can put word out there, because we were still up on YouTube and we have a pretty decent audience on YouTube. The Zoom link is back working if by the end of the meeting they want comments, so. The link that we posted for, for our hybrid participation is up.
And we have two openings in the Library Board. Mr. Ron Smith and Mrs. Cheryl Lee. On that one, the HR Committee, we've had long discussions about it, but ultimately it comes down to a couple of different things. Ron, Ron was a future, a past trustee and, and very respected in this community. I want to keep his engagement. And I also want to have a trustee on the, the board reporting back to us. So my recommendations there is to reappoint Mr. Ron Smith. And I would like to ask Ms. Gail Reister to act as a trustee representative on the Library Board. So that's, that's my recommendations and I'm asking this council for their support.
President Frisbee, I'd like to make a motion that we accept your recommendations for both Mr. Smith as well as the past educator on the board here, who's going to be a great addition to the Library Board. Gail? Yes?
We have support?
Trustee Keller, I support.
We have a motion, a trustee Holmes support by trustee Keller. I'll do a, all those in, a roll call. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much for your support, team. The motion carries. And I'll reach out to the appropriate individuals through the week. And that brings us to committee, no, excuse me, Mr. Managers' report. And I did write that in to 11E. For Mr. Alex Lee, I'd like him to step up and give us a little rundown of what we have coming up in the next week.
Thank you, Mr. Frisbee. I guess I'm talking in regards to the August 9th food truck rally downtown. We've been lucky in working with the mill. They've had successful food truck rallies on Tuesdays out there and Jim has tasked me with events downtown. So we talked to the food truck rally folks and decided we'd like to move that into our downtown August 9th. I also talked to Chief Sanderson because to move that amount of trucks, entertainment, there'll be some attractions as well. We're looking to close Prairie Street from Kalamazoo to Main. That would be just to the west of the crosswalk. And then we would cross Main Street from the crosswalk south to Washington. And our thinking is that that would leave North Street, Main, and you could take Prairie out to the west. So what, what we were asking for is permission to close both those streets to accommodate that food truck rally. And we've had great success with all of those we've done. Like to thank the mill and some of their event planners for partnering with us on our downtown activities this year, but and then may I mention the 150th anniversary?
As well as the event this Friday.
We, we would propose the same closure for that event. We've been meeting now, the Historic Society is taking the lead, but there's a lot of support actors and I met with the Historic Society Board. The conversation was animated, very excited. There's a lot of buy-in, but I'm not ready to discuss any of the specifics at this point because there's a lot of pieces we're putting together. But I guarantee you, you will not want to miss it. It'll be the talk of the town for the next 150 years. October 15th.
Can you also highlight this Friday afternoon with the farmer's market downtown?
Check our Facebook page, check our website. The farmer's market is being evicted by the B&amp;B event. And we hope everybody will do both of those events, but we're moving the farmer's market downtown on Main Street. There will be food, there will be music. And around the corner on Washington will be a Touch the Truck event. Our DPW, our Vicksburg Fire Department, our Vicksburg Police Department will be there to talk to youth, let the kids get in the vehicles, get up close. And by the way, we're using our $2,000 Bike Light Grant from Bike Friendly Kalamazoo. And our police department, I'll make sure I have all these, Thursday night, they will be at the B&amp;B Youth Night from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. They'll be giving away bike lights to children. to 8:00 PM. They'll be giving away bike lights to children who are there, bring their bikes, they're easy to attach. They'll be doing it from 2:00 to 6:00 on Friday along Washington as part of the Touch a Truck event. And then watch closely for the Parks and Recs Community Movie Event. We'll be announcing that very soon. And we will have our Police and Fire Department there. I'm sure I bought enough lights to extend to that event as well.
Yeah, I think a couple things of note, that Alex is a little too humble, but he made sure that the lights for these bicycles were purchased from the local hardware on a competitive and worked with Steve there. So I appreciate that. And the date on the movie at the Pavilion or movie in the park is July 29th, which will be the first one and, and really look forward to that energy, so.
Right. We're just shoring up some start times and maybe some ancillary things that will be available, and certainly if not, some instructions to parents on what to expect and what to bring. So if there are any additional questions, I'll answer them. If not, I'll get back to my second job at directing tonight's meeting.
Do we know the movie?
I'm sorry?
Do we know the movie?
It's a children's movie called Bad Guys.
Oh, you know what to tell.
I was hoping for Minions, but that's okay.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you, Alex.
I don't think we need to make a motion of supporting your, I think, I think we're good with closing down Main and Prairie unless you're asking us.
We do, we do need council support by roll call vote when we close a street down. So the specific request is on August 9th to approve staff to have, it'll be done in a safe manner, but, but Prairie Street between Main and Kalamazoo closed to pedestrian traffic only, as well as Main Street between Prairie and Washington.
Trustee Keller, so moved.
Trustee Holmes, second.
Motion by trustee Keller, second by trustee Holmes. Do a roll call vote, Mr. Weins?
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Reister.
Yes.
President Pro Tim Keller.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Alex. Thanks for everything you're doing. So Jimmy, how to report, quick report on the DPW?
Yes, that is moving forward. The electric subcontractor was in today to begin that process, as well as completing the bathroom, gas hopefully by the end of the week. There is a issue we're working through with the overhead doors as the wrong springs were delivered, but we're confident that'll get rectified and move forward. And then the last comment, being quick, is I just, I, I really, we, coming out of this infrastructure project, our goal was to utilize this downtown to get people at bare minimum out of sheer curiosity to come to the Village of Vicksburg. Since then, we've had four unique local stores open up in our downtown. We see our participation in the park, and there isn't a week that has gone by that I have not had contact with multiple people, not from Vicksburg, and in probably half the incidents, their first visit to the Village of Vicksburg. A lot of credit goes out to Mackenzie's Bakery, has drawn a lot of attention and people from the outside, but a lot of positive comments on the bookstore addition to downtown, the Lake Living Store, the kids' gaming, state of the art, as long as, and then go on and on. And I really want to thank staff who stepped up, both Chief Sanderson, Alex, in the office, Michelle, people answering the phones to create these events downtown to expose people to what Vicksburg has to offer. So that'll conclude my report.
Thank you, Jim. So we have some committee reports. Tree Committee, was anything new and?
Nothing new.
Nothing new. Parks and Rec?
There should be a meeting on the 25th and here at 7:00 o'clock. And then on July 29th, as Alex said, they're going to air a movie at the Pavilion, Bad Guy, so geared towards children.
I think a lot of them were, were, this meeting is just a week before a lot of, a lot of our meetings, so.
One item on trees is, people might know us on Forest Street, that the pine trees were taken down on the east side of the industrial park. AEP has engaged with Prudential to put an appropriate barrier there with the appropriate tree that will not cause problems in 20 to 30 years. But that work, Prudential has recommended not to be done until the middle of September, where the most likelihood those trees survive. And that neighborhood and the industrial park has had personal contact by DPW and been informed of the same.
Thank you for that communication with the residents, Jim. Cass' meeting was a, a breakfast meeting at Comstock Park. It wasn't anything really going on that affected this community, and not a lot of, of business was taking place. It was just more of a meet and greet for everyone, so. But there is another one next week. Planning Commission meeting?
Yes, President Frisbee, it was last Monday. It was a brief meeting. A couple things, there was really nothing that was voted on, but there was some things that were discussed. First, the, the owner of the building on Boulevard and Prairie Street did discuss with the Planning Commission their intent with the building. It appears that the project is still developing as we speak, so there are no formal presentation or motions made, and it's, it's developing, as I said. The, as far as the village managers' report, much of which we talked about tonight, I think one of the things also that was, which was like the master plan, one of the things that Jim did talk about, though, that was, was neat, was the DDA grant program and, and the facade program then being phased out because of it. And it was, it's great to see that, that program taking foot. And I, I believe the idea there is that there will be a group of people that will be reviewing those applications, and, and then decisions will be made regarding those. Also was discussed that we're, the village manager will be reviewing candidates for next year's Planning Commission as well, and the idea is to fill those positions at the August meeting. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you, sir. The sewer meeting is next week, so we can report at a next meeting, and that leaves fire.
We have a meeting on Wednesday here at 6:00. Oops, sorry. We have a meeting here Wednesday at 6:00. So, and then trustee Olson informed me, evidently there was a fatality out, out here by State's Golf Course Sunday, you said?
I'm here completing things, but I'm here Friday or Saturday.
Okay. I was out of town, so I, I wasn't, wasn't alerted to that, but I'm sure in the chief's report, there'll probably be something about it on Wednesday, so.
Also, at, at the request of them, we did supply an RFP on, on facility needs.
My apologies, yes. Per our request, or per the request from the Fire Authority and, and staff put together an RFP that was forwarded to the, to the Director of the Fire Authority to help with a study as far as, as far as possible locations of, of new sites if needed. So that's, we'll kind of see where that goes from there. So I'm sure we'll hear more about it on Wednesday.
Thank you, sir. I need to back up and do my due diligence. In the Planning Commission, I failed to talk about Mr. Don Whitella. He also, we, we agreed, we appointed Zach Bishop, but Don's term expires, and I would make a recommendation that we appoint him back for a one-year term on the Planning Commission and, and ask, ask all of you for your support in that. So if I could get a motion in a second?
Make a motion to approve Mr. Whitella for another year on the Planning and DDA Commission.
Reister, support.
Motion made by trustee Holmes, support by trustee Reister. If I can get a voice call, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Phew, dodged a bullet on that one. Thank you all. So this is our time for citizens' comments. Can be anything related to the agenda or anything that's on your mind about the community. So I just ask that you limit to three minutes, and if anyone would like to speak, step up to the podium and give us your name and address. Nobody rushing up there, so I...
Deborah Harsha, 223 West Washington. My question, I'm here because of the master plan. I'm really curious to see what that's all about and how that's going to go, so that's why I'm here tonight. And I know we need a new village hall, absolutely. I'm glad that there's planning and money for the village hall, but I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be a better idea to wait a year until after the master plan is done. And this is nothing I came in here thinking before I walked in the door, but if the master plan indicates that our village is going to be growing this way or that way, 25 seats may not be enough. I mean, there's, you know, not very many seats here right now, and maybe you won't have that many people going in the future, but maybe you will. Maybe it needs to be a skosh bigger, or the basement needs to be on the other side, based on what the master plan has to say. Because I think we're, we all know, we're growing like crazy. So maybe not go further until we know. Just a thought.
Thank you for those comments. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time. That leaves us up to village trustee time. I'll start with...
Are there anybody online?
There, there, there's... Not currently. There, there's, there is on YouTube, but not on the hybrid, Mike.
Trustee Olson?
I'm sure Carl will touch on it about the Beer and Brat Fest this weekend, but also there is the 50th Class reunion and the Class of 72, which I am a proud member of, along with Kenny Skippers and Missy Crawford. Yeah, I know, I'm old. God, I can't believe I'm that old. But I figure I'm going to go in the record books, you know, 50th, you know, reunion, yeah. So, yeah, in more ways than one, so anyhow, but, yeah, I know, but boy, there's those, those days. I feel like I'm 102, so anyhow, but kind of looking forward to that this weekend, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Wagner?
This is totally not a sponsorship, but over the weekend I had a chance to get some of the challah bread from Mackenzie's. And as a recipe advice, French toast, it is incredible for French toast. So if you haven't had it, I think it's available on Fridays. So always Fridays, definitely give that a shot. If you need pictures or reference, I'd be happy to supply them. There, there are no leftovers. And, you know, if we happen to do a community breakfast of some kind, I'd be happy to cook some up. That's it for me, thank you.
Trustee Reister?
No, I am all set, thanks.
Trustee Merrill?
Same thing about the B&amp;B, it's, it's great fun, and it's been going on for years and years, and it's like a reunion time. People come back home. And so I hope everybody can go visit that and the farmer's market.
Trustee Holmes?
Would like to thank Deborah for coming and listening tonight to, to this marathon session. They usually aren't this long, by the way, but we appreciate your patience. We would just like to do, welcome back Mr. Whitella and Zach Bishop and, and to the Planning Commission and DDA. It's always great to have talent on, on the board, unlike people like me, that's representing this council. But no, in all seriousness, it's a very important authority within the village, and that's why it's great to see, again, us continue to put people that are very well qualified on it, so.
Trustee Keller?
Also, thank you for coming tonight and sharing your, I know you guys sat through a long meeting. Apologize, but y'all stole my thunder with the B&amp;B. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. I, I'm the one lying that's on this club, on this, on this board.
This is Mr. B&amp;B right here.
Yeah. I, I'm the bartender there, so. So if you, if you come down, I'll, I'll be happy to serve you. I will not over-serve you. But we're looking forward to it. It's the first one we've had in three years. It's a huge fundraiser for the club, and we're anticipating a huge crowd this year. So if you can make it, that was great. I worked with Mr. Lee a week or, week ago or so to dovetail into the, the Touch a Truck thing. I said, you know, that'd be an excellent thing for, for kids' night, Thursday night. He was able to put that together on short notice, and so we're going to make that happen. So to him and, and Chief Sanderson, I appreciate you, you guys working that out for us, so.
Yeah, that was, that was really cool. Was last year at Centennial, I believe you did the same thing, and that, that really, really went over well. So I like the idea continuing and in the village. Thanks very much. Thank you for everyone that's here tonight, you know. I, I stress this over and over, how we want more citizens engaged in what we do and, and have more input and comment from them. So this is nice to see the crowd out here tonight. Kyle Mucha, thank you for your three years of services, community. You were, you will be missed, but on the other end with McKenna and representing them, I think you'll do an excellent job, so thanks. And want to thank Ms. Cheryl Lee for her time on the Library Board and what she's brought to that, that board. And Mr. Fredericks, you know, thank you. Thank you for all you're doing for this community. You know, you give a lot of time and a lot of value that we, we don't necessarily pay for, so thank you.
Great place to live and a great place for your children.
Amen. Thank you very much for all that. And that's it for me. So if anybody wants to stay or give a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion adjourned.